I'd like to call it a order, the Carver County Board of Commissioners meeting for June 19th, 2018, regular session. Please join me as we respect our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, greetings folks. We'll start with public comments. This has to do with issues that are not on the agenda. We have a five-minute limit. If you feel that you need additional comments for the public record, you can submit those in writing, and I'll be sure that they're included in the public record. Please identify yourself and let us know your address before you speak.
Karen Johnson-Lightner, 15735, Mayor, Minnesota, 38th Street. I'm not representing the Hollywood Township Board, I'm not representing the Carver County Commissioners Board, I'm not representing the Carver County staff, I'm not representing the Carver County Attorney's Office. I am a relevant, public watchdog. I told, two weeks ago, two meetings ago, I said I was gonna start my own investigation of why my husband, Al Lightner, and I were put on felony police reports by four people in Hollywood Township. I will not say their names today, but what I figured is, I have to go back to the root of the problem. In November of 1999, I showed up at the first Hollywood Township meeting, wondering why a radio tower is in the wrong location. And I'm thinking that, that, that really upset quite a few people. I brought up the last meeting, that in March of 2000, that the broker that sold the radio tower, it would've been three months after his up, for John Linder, $20 million, with our emergency communication that was going on there, actually ended up Sheriff Bud Olson. Sheriff Bud Olson is not Sheriff Jim Olson, who is our sheriff of right now. But he was at that annual meeting, and he knew exactly what was going on with that radio tower. And he got up, and he knew what was going on, and he talked about other things in Carver County. This is March of 2000, I will never forget the comments. And he knew that the whole 800 megahertz truck system was going down the tubes because of John Linder and his deals that he made, and lied, and lied, and lied on paperwork. The choice was, that Carver County Sheriff's Department, Sheriff Bud Olson, made a choice, because he, "Please look up here, you guys." Anyways, what he decided to do, he was rather go after the citizens that were questioning why a radio tower was in the location it was.
Excuse me ma'am, I'll direct the county board.
That's great.
Where they look. Thank you. Continue, please.
Okay, took away some time. Anyways, what I was gonna say is, he decided-
I'll yield you that additional time. Go ahead.
He decided he wanted to say nothing. We continued to come to meetings, the Carver County Sheriff's Department, the lawyers, the board, the staff, said nothing. No one would talk. It was because of the fact that they thought the citizens would quit. So what ends up happening is Commander Robert Vanderbrook, and you guys got copies of this, he starts showing up at the Carver, at the Hollywood Township meetings. He starts not dealing with what John Linder did to our emergency communications, our whole setup. What was supposed to be great turned into his money-making John Linder. You all know it, you all know it, and you all been hiding on it. Commissioner Ishes was on the board at that time, Dave Kimsey, you know what happened. And it was Chairman Degler right now, he knows. Why won't you tell the citizens of Carver County what a mess this emergency communication was? Why do you let me sit up here for 18 years, fighting for the truth for the taxpayers of Carver County? I'm here today because of the fact solar is being ran the same way. You're lying to the people, your silence is a lie, you're hurting people. So why don't you just pull that information out of the comp plan? Why don't you start over? Because two men that worked for the Sheriff's Department in 1999 made a choice, and the choice was, we will hide the truth from the Carver County citizens and the people from Hollywood Township. And you let a guy make $20 million, and the last time the tower was sold was $28 million. What went up? You open up the papers now, they said you cannot reject a cellphone tower. Help, anything. You open up the paper now, large companies are running all our communication. The small companies are gone, just like solar. Lots of LLCs of solar were around, they're all gone now. I'm gonna keep on coming here, I want Sheriff Olson, Bud, the retired one, and Vanderbrook to tell me the truth, the day they should've told me the truth at the Hollywood Township Board, 'cause I wouldn't have to be here.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any other folks that would like to make public comments to the board at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to our next item, which approval of the agenda and adoption, review and adoption, and we have two proposed agenda amendments. One is to add 5.17, which is a Bowser Clean Water Fund allocation proposal, and to also delete 6.3, the Waconia Event Center operations. So do I have a motion to approve that agenda with the noted changes?
So moved.
There's a motion by Commissioner Lynch, two, and a second by Commissioner Workman. Is there any further discussion regarding that motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, that motion prevails. Moving on to item number three, approval of the minutes of the June 5th, 2018, regular session, and the June 12th, 2018, County Board of Appeal and Equalization. Is there a motion for approval regarding that item?
Move approval, Mr. Chair.
Approval by Commissioner Lynch, second by Commissioner Workman. Is there any further discussion regarding that motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, that motion prevails. Moving on to the next agenda item. Item number four is community announcement. Do any of the commissioners have a community announcement?
I do not.
Not a last chance. All right, we'll move on to other items. The next item is item number five, which is the consent agenda. Is there a motion regarding the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Lynch, and second by Commissioner Workman regarding the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The consent agenda stands as approved. Moving to item number six, 6.1, is a public hearing, amendment to the Solid Waste Management Ordinance. I believe I need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Motion to open the public hearing by Commissioner Workman, second by Commissioner Lynch. Any further discussion regarding opening the public hearing? Hearing none, all in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That motion prevails. The public hearing is now open. Mr. Bowe, the show is yours, sir.
All righty. Just a moment to let the technology catch up to you guys, you're quicker than we are here today. There we go. Okay. There we go. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, honorable commissioners, Greg Bowe, Environmental Services Department Manager. We're here today for an item that's actually pretty quick and pretty basic, just a little housekeeping. We're going to do a little cleaning of some of the verbiage in our solid waste ordinance, which is chapter 50 of the county code. So a little background as to what got us to this point. The regional waste hauler licensing program was operated under the oversight of the Solid Waste Management Coordinating Board from 1995 through 2017, when Swim Club went away December 31st of 2017. So since that time now, in March of 2018, Carver County was one of the metro counties that approved a regional solid waste hauler licensing joint powers agreement with all seven metro counties. On March 29th, that joint powers board held its first meeting, and at that meeting, the joint powers board did approve a license fee of $100 per truck, and that's a two-year license that would be effective from July 1st, 2018, through June 30th, 2020. Now, the old fee in our regional hauler licensing program through Swim Club was $50 per truck, per year. This has just been made to $100 per truck, per two years. So the cost overall is the same for the haulers, it just gives them a little more convenience in that they don't have to go through this process every year, but rather just every two years they'll license their trucks. The dollar cost is the same. And it should be, should be noticed as, you know, that's really what we're cleaning up, that and the verbiage of the ordinance here. So the joint powers agreement then requires that each county open up their solid waste ordinances and amend them to establish the regional licensing program through that joint powers board. So staff here at Carver County have worked to revise the Carver County Chapter 50, and the only work that was done was to establish the regional licensing program. No additional requirements were put forth into the ordinance. So it was strictly cleaning that up and making that fee change to the, every other year. So the public hearing notice was published in the Chaska Herald on May 31st, and we also sent out notification letters to each of the haulers that are licensed in Carver County. We did that on June 4th, so that they would know that this was coming in case they had anything that they wanted to bring before the board. So today, what the Environmental Services Department is requesting is twofold. Number one, we're requesting that the board conduct a public hearing on the proposed solid waste management ordinance 85-2018. And secondly, we're asking that the board would consider approving the attached resolution adopting ordinance 85-2018, which amends chapter 50 of the Carver County Code of Ordinances, which oversees solid waste management and the corresponding fee adjustment that we discussed a few minutes ago.
I think Mr. Bowe, uh, commissioners questions or Mr. Bowe? Seeing none, the motion would be in order as requested by Mr. Bowe.
Mr. Chair, then you want to put public-
Oh, I'm sorry. Who calls, a motion to close a public hearing would be in order.
There's nobody from the public, Mr. Chairman?
I forgot to check. Anybody from the public wanna talk to these things regarding this issue? Well, boy, you can get out of practice.
I would move to close the public hearing.
Thank you, Commissioner Workman, and second by Commissioner Lynch. Any further discussion about closing the public hearing? Hearing none, all in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Then the public hearing is closed. What are the wishes of the commissioners?
Well, Mr. Chairman, just a small summary, this is a, the Swim Club, as we called it, the Solid Waste Management Coordinating Board, I was a member of it for 16 years. I am not sad to see it gone. Millions and millions of dollars spent on an organization I was probably trying to get rid of for 16 years.
You're successful, Commissioner.
And so here we are, government doesn't move fast. So this is all pretty mundane, what we're doing here today. We're not here to talk about the Swim Club, but it is, I think, a step in the right direction to a little bit less government in this area, and so I'm excited about it. So, I don't know if I can just make one broad motion, unless Commissioner Lynch has comments. A motion adopting the attached resolution enacting ordinance number 85-2018, amending chapter 50 of the Carver County Code of Ordinances, solid waste management, and making a corresponding change in the schedule of county fees.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion by Commissioner Workman, second by Commissioner Lynch. Is there further discussion regarding that particular motion?
If I could, I'd like to comment to Mr. Bowe. Many times you hear about government making your life more difficult. You know, and instead of the $50 every year, we make it biannually, so it just makes it more convenient for the haulers, so. So congratulations to you.
Excellent point, Mr., or Commissioner Lynch. I had several meetings today, and we have a tendency to have that going on here at the courthouse. Not that it's a recent thing, but it's just reminded me that we do good work like that. So, Mr. Bowe, you, you do that on a regular basis, and we do appreciate your efforts that way, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, I appreciate that very much.
Did we do a vote on that?
We did not.
I think we'll vote on it if there's no further discussion. If there's none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That motion stands approved. Moving on. Thank you, Mr. Bowe.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 6.2, the Veterans Memorial Construction and Phasing Update. And Marty, you're on that, huh? All right.
Mr. Chair, Marty Walsh, Carver County Parks Director. And we'd like to take this opportunity here just to kinda give you an update on the activities of the Veterans Memorial. And so, in the audience here, we have Stan Health and Rich Kors. They are members of the Carver County Veterans Memorial Registry, and we thought it would take this opportunity to kinda give you an update. So I'm just gonna click through a couple of slides here, and then I'm gonna turn it over to Stan to kinda give you an update. So, just a reminder, where the Veterans Memorial is located. This happens to be at the corner of County Road 30 and Highway 25 in Mare. That's the site that, how it looked like about a little over a year ago. Just remember what the vision was for the monument, and what's kinda planned there. We did go through a site planning process and ultimately approval of a plan, and that's shown in this diagram. The veterans group did have a phasing plan. I think Rich, uh, Rich and Stan here will update you on the, kinda the phasing, how things are going. And then just to kinda share some other photographs here, some are of 2017. This is the site, looking from Highway 25 back towards the lumberyard facilities. Then there was clearing and drainage work that was done last fall, as well as some site grading and removal of miscellaneous materials that were on site. And then this is a photograph as of last week, where it looks like the grade beam, or foundation, if you will, for the monument has been installed, and some additional work there. So with that, Mr. Chair, I'm gonna turn it over to Stan to give us a quick little update.
Thank you, Marty. Hi, Stan.
Hi, fellows.
Good to see you're still upright.
Yeah, yes, we are. And things are working, working a little faster these days than they have in the last five years since we started this, so. And we're getting, we're getting very anxious these days. You got to see the footings of the foundation. Of course, the weather hasn't, hasn't been very cooperative here lately. Rich can attest to that. He's been pumping water, up to 20,000, 25,000 gallons a day out of the site hole area, and, but hopefully, it's gonna dry off now, and then we can get to some of the other work. A little bit on the site itself, we had some tile lines. Rich can tell us a little bit about those tile lines that we, that we weren't expecting to find, and... When'd you come up to the mic?
We found two of them, I think, wasn't it, on going west to them ponds behind the lumberyard, and we repaired them all and put them in new. And they're, they're running good right now, so. And, just them two, I think.
Yeah. And there was one that came sort of kitty-cornered through the foundation site that we had to, had to reroute, so. When we sometimes think we don't see activity or things happening, they've been happening underground that we had to work with, so. You dig 'em up, and then you cover 'em up again, so. Cold Spring, granted, we, we have been looking to keep going. That was our, sort of our plan with the paver gardens and that. But they're asking us to not disturb a lot of the ground, because if, once they come in with their trucks, if we have some sidewalk or cement area in there, and it's, and their trucks happen to crack it, they said they don't wanna be responsible for it. We're, we're having them come down to see if we can possibly continue on, if they can do it from the backside, so it's one of the things we're working on right now. It's, it's our thoughts to keep going with the monument, the paver gardens, and then also into the parking lot. And then when the monument comes, it would be, it would be put up. Where we're setting with the monument itself, we have our graphic designer, and this, this is the, the panels for each of the service, services. It looks like within the next 10 days, we're gonna be at a meeting that's gonna approve the, at least four of the panels. This is quite a process. We have taken probably anywhere's up to 1,500 pictures just to get the six saluting soldiers that are paying respect to the paver gardens and to the museum case that we have placed there, around 1,500. These photo shoots, one took place down in downtown St. Paul at the National Guard Headquarters. Another one at the museum in Waconia, where we had access to a lot of uniforms. Down at the National Guard Headquarters, we actually got uniforms that we rented from the Orpheum Theater, and that we put on soldiers that we got from down at the Guard Headquarters. And the last photo shoot we did at the Mayor City Hall, where I think we picked up a couple of them. Now, there's, all these saluting soldiers are actual soldiers. They're not models, they're models in a, in a form of speaking, but they're, they were all in, in, in the service in one service or another. I think we've got one Navy guy that was, that's in the Army, but he's in a Navy uniform. He objected to it, but we're gonna see if he's gonna sign the paper for releasing his pictures, so. And then we do have some local ones that are gonna be, that are gonna be on the panels, so. I can't give you much more details than that, because that's sorta gonna be when we release the, the panels, and that'll probably happen before the panels actually come out themselves, so. It's quite neat. Our graphic designer is right now working on the background images, because around the saluting soldier, there's going to be all sorts of different images that'll represent that branch of service, like say the Marines. One of the things, the images that they're well-known for would be Uwajima, the raising of the flag on Uwajima, and, and that'll be one of the images that'll be smaller on there. But we want that, when that service person steps out of his vehicle and looks down at the panels, he's gonna say, "There's my panel," so, with, by recognizing the things that are on there. The unique thing of this memorial is that there's no other like it. This is the only one, and we had no pattern to follow, and this is, and, and this is what made it challenging, I guess, and also fun in a way, too, because of the, hopefully the accomplishments will be worth the time that we've put into it, so. The paver gardens, we're finding, the area was used as a, as a dumping ground, where-
Lots of concrete.
Lots of concrete in there, and we're going to have to remove that. A guesstimation came of how many truckloads?
Concrete?
Uh, of truckloads of dirt and concrete, and-
Probably 400. It's gonna be a lot.
And then we gotta get that, we gotta get the, fill the clay and the class five back in there again. We have been fortunate, one of the solar garden companies out by Roots Lake took up all their class five, where they had their, their staging-
Parking lots and stuff.
Parking lots and stuff in, and they delivered it, donated and delivered it. That's the big pile of class five that's laying there.
And the one south of Mare's probably gonna do the same thing when it dries up. They're, they're on schedule to bring us that three, too.
Well.
That's a-
And so those are good, good, good finds on that. Cold Spring has, Rich talked with them just yesterday. They said they're, they are cutting pieces for it, so. Once the, and our graphic designer and the design person up at Cold Spring have been communicating to see if that they have the right, they, they used the word "resolution," and to them it means something, to me it doesn't, I guess it, it's the, of the fineness of the, of the picture. And he's getting, he's, he's got that in places with the soldiers, or. It could happen, we're hoping it's gonna happen, late summer, early fall, that the monument physically will be going.
They're on schedule right now to come on August 17th, with the first loads and the crane. August 17th to the 20th, that's projected date they're gonna build it.
We're hoping.
If we get our images done in time.
Along, once we, at our, our next meeting, our lawyer will be involved, and then he'll be looking at all the pictures on the images, and then his job starts to where he has got, once we approve him as a committee, then he's gotta go to each of these people, each of these pictures that we have pulled off the internet. If there is any kind of a string attached to it, he has gotta make sure that we got it released, so that the panel will be clear, so it is legally ours. And that'll be his job to be going, and that'll be starting here very shortly, so. And then the other thing, we talked about Highway 25 sidewalk, which would be an extension of the sidewalk from the downtown area of Mare, towards the lumberyard. I went and attended the meeting last Wednesday at MinDOT had over at Mare on redoing Highway 25 south, north to Watertown. They're starting right at the edge of the park property, the trail property, and they wouldn't, they, they won't go another block to catch ours on this project. But they said, when it goes from County Road 30 north, then the sidewalk could be put in, and if, if it did happen, they would, they would pay for it.
South.
Uh, south, yes. They're gonna go north on this, on this next project from Mare to Watertown, so. It'd be about four years, but maybe it's worth the wait. We'll, we'll just put it on hold, because we've got a lot of work to do before that point anyhow, so. And then last but not least, we do have a fundraiser coming November 8th. It's our annual one. This year, it's gonna be moved over to the Lutheran High School Field House, the new field house. We've been invited to, to utilize that. The speaker is a lieutenant colonel, a retired lieutenant colonel, and he is a survivor from the Pentagon attack from 9/11, so. Should be quite interesting, we're looking forward to that, so. At some point, tickets will be up, and you, I know you guys will be, wanna, wanna be there again, so. Any questions that I can answer for you?
Well, I believe Commissioner Lynch has been a champion of your project on this board, and this board is always, I'm proud to say, very supportive of veterans' efforts and also in helping veterans, but I think Commissioner Lynch might have a few comments, so.
I, thank you, Mr. Chair, I really do. First of all, I'd like to thank you for the countless hours you two have volunteered for this. I wouldn't say hundreds, but it's probably thousands. And Commissioner Maluchek and myself were just out in DC, and I got the opportunity to see the World War II Memorial, the Vietnam Memorial, the Korean War Memorial, but... Excuse me, at the end, the one that touched me the most was Arlington. It's absolutely 400,000 headstones of people who gave their lives for our country. So I can't wait for you guys to, to see this, and I know you guys have been working on it for five years. And to see the foundation in was really, really cool for me to see, and I'm sure it was much more for you. So, thank you from the bottom of my heart.
You're welcome.
Well, you said it better than the chair could, so I appreciate it. Stan, thank you, and also, you need to thank Marty and his staff for, for helping out and doing a great job they do with you guys, so.
He's been great.
Yep, we know that, that's why he's still around here.
Okay.
Okay, thanks again, Stan.
Thank you, gentlemen.
We'll see you November 8th, all right?
Okay.
Okay, good. I need the county veteran service officer to come forward, too, so I can distribute the document to him. You can see he's all worried. I believe I owe this to you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so that was just for information, Marty, then?
That was primarily for information, no action needed, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you very much.
Looking forward to August 17th.
Yes, you'll be letting us all know about that, right?
Yes.
Okay, good. Somebody has to keep them organized, right? And then I guess we move on to our next item, which is 6.4, professional services agreement for master planning work for Minnesota River Bluffs and Southwest Regional Trails. So Marty, you have that item.
I thank you again, Mr. Chair, Marty Walsh, Carver County Parks Director. We are about to undertake, or would like to undertake, some work related to the Southwest Regional Trail and Minnesota River Bluffs Regional Trail. We're gonna try to knock down two birds with one stone with this project, so. Just a little bit here, we would like to amend the Southwest Regional Trail, and we'll get into some of the diagrams here, but it was our first master plan that we did for Trail back in 2006, and the surroundings have changed, and we'll get into that. One of those changes has been the development near Wasserman Lake, which is over in Victoria. The proposed development, or the development there is inconsistent with- The proposed development, or the development there is inconsistent with the proposed trail alignment. So a new trail alignment is recommended and the regional documents need to be updated so that we, that guides our other planning activities. The second part of this is to amend the Minnesota River Bluffs Regional Trail, which we've talked about here in the past about trying to work to address the slope failure issue and then address long-term stewardship and ownership of the corridor in Carver County. So those are the two significant elements of the work that we're going to do. Just to kind of remind you about the Southwest Regional Trail, and again, this is our alignment that was kind of planned back in two thousand and six. It connects the Lake Minnetoka Regional Trail, which comes into the northern part of the county, to the Minnesota River Bluffs Regional Trail in the southern part of the county. So concerning the Southwest Regional Trail connection, the development near Wasserman Lake is not conducive to a regional trail alignment through the existing residential development. There's too many driveway crossings and the volume of users for a regional trail in that area is inconsistent with the neighborhood environment. So we are proposing to relocate that trail over to Marsh Lake Road. So just to kind of get you familiar, this happens to be our existing master plan and to get you kind of oriented here, Lake Bavaries up this direction, Wasserman here, this is the intersection of Pioneer Trail, Marsh Lake Road, and our County Road eleven. And where things have gotten quite inconsistent here, again, this dates, this area photo dates back to about two thousand and six and there's a fair amount of development that has occurred in this area. So just to kind of show you that in greater detail, again, this is the intersection of, again, our County Road eleven, Marsh Lake Road, and Pioneer Trail. And you can see all the lots that are in this area. Our original alignment would have taken the trail past the school along Red Fox Drive and over to some open space and then a plan that would have brought it near other open space, Lakeshore Property and out to sixty-three. You can see with the development here, many homes, really not too feasible to have that sort of a trail system through, through the neighborhood. So we are proposing to change the alignment, move it out here to Marsh Lake Road and then bring it over to forty-three. So just to kind of move back a little bit, the current plan shows the trail alignment coming and then going through open space along Marsh Lake, or along Wasserman Lake, out to County Road forty-three. Our new alignment would be proposed along Marsh Lake Road and then directly over to Any questions on that, otherwise I'll move on to the Minnesota River-
Board members, questions for Mr. Walsh?
Well-
Mr. Workman.
I think I put that, that larger county map up. Go back.
Go back.
There you go. You know, Mr. Chairman, look how close we are to liberating the city of Waconia by a bike trail there. I do get that, yeah, my constituents don't sound exactly like that.
It's only you, Commissioner.
You're correct. And so, not for today, but of course, Marty, let's figure out how we're going to maybe wiggle, waggle that through and over to there. I think that's a, I would think the city of Waconia folks would want that, too. So we're getting close. So anyway.
I think the, all members of this board would be very supportive of that. And I think Marty, you've played with that idea a little bit, haven't you?
Yeah. Mr. Chair members, just to remind folks, too, that, you know, our comprehensive plan shows many more trails than what this map currently shows. And then, two, I believe, last meeting authorization to apply for federal funds for a grant along Waconia up towards the corridor rail corridor. So that is some work that we are taking on the wings, but certainly recognize the need to connect communities to other places.
Okay, well, thanks for bringing that up, Commissioner Workman. It's a concern for probably all the board members and I know Marty's been working on that. So any other questions to this point for Marty? All right, Mr. Walsh, go ahead and continue.
So moving on to the Minnesota River Bluffs Regional Trail and again, just to reacquaint folks, you know, this is really termed the Minnesota River Bluffs Regional Trail that comes out of Hennepin County down into Carver County. Through our actual planning work, we still, that trail continues through Chaska and into Carver. This diagram doesn't particularly show that. But the area that, where the slope failure is and the area that's what we're talking about today is really amending this portion of the plan to include the Minnesota River Bluffs Regional Trail. So getting back here, we've discussed in workshop session that, you know, the original railroad corridor was purchased by the Hennepin County Regional Rail Authority back in nineteen ninety. There was a salt failure that occurred in two thousand and fourteen that has since closed that and then we've had to do a six mile detour around that, around that route. We've been working very closely with HCRA. You know, initially they did make an application to FEMA. They were initially denied, then appealed, later a partial award was happened. But we're really not confident at the end of the day that FEMA is the right direction for us to go on this project. So we are thinking about other ways to do the project. And then also there's concern with federalizing the project because the costs tend to escalate because there's higher standards to meet. This is a process for us to move forward in partnership with Hennepin County Regional Rail Authority and with the Metropolitan Council. Carver County's role in this part of it here is to submit the master plan. That master plans are instrumental in securing regional funding. So we would ultimately acquire the corridor. The Metropolitan Council ultimately would approve the master plan and then authorize regional funding for the acquisition. Hennepin County Regional Rail Authority agrees to sell the corridor and then leads the construction efforts for, in terms of reconstructing that, that slope failure area and takes care of some other issues that we may have. We will do this through a joint powers agreement, maybe initially starting off with a memorandum of understanding, but ultimately to an agreement. What that agreement will state, a large part of it is that the proceeds from the sale, the sale that we buy, that we sell, or they sell to us and the proceeds go to fix the slope failure. So we will be working on an appraisal and then moving forward, or at least we're proposing to move forward with the, with the master plan here and ultimately, again, joint powers agreement. Just to kind of show this area in a little closer detail, this is the former Union Pacific Railroad that is owned by the Hennepin County Regional Rail Authority, extends just a little bit south of our County Road sixty-one, over to Bluff Creek Drive. We did pave this section about a year ago, crosses Bluff Creek Drive and continues over towards the county line here. So all total, I think it's just about two miles. And you can see the, in red here, it is a bit irregular shape. Some parts are a hundred feet wide and then some parts of this are very wide near places like the Seminary fence. So it's an interesting place. And kind of moving on here with regards to Metropolitan Council, they would approve and amend the regional master plan. We've got great deal of confidence that they will do that. This is a part of the regional trail system as it is today. We've also met with the LCCMR, which is the funding source for this, that council will tap into, to amend their project list. They've been out to the site on February ninth, they took a look at it and again, from their perspective, it would be an eligible project. So we would recommend amending the eligible project list. So approval of the LCCMR pending, then a completed master plan. So all the ducks kind of have to kind of fall in order here. Master plan and then approval by the Metropolitan Council and then also amending the approved project list by the LCCMR. So that was, Mr. Chair, the master plan amendment for the Southwest Regional Trail connection, we went over that, provides long-term guidance for the regional trail connection between the Minnetoka Regional Trail and Minnesota River Bluffs Regional Trail. Planning work is very helpful when applying for grant funding and eligibility for regional funding considerations. And again, it will guide both Victoria and us in our plans for roadways and so forth moving, moving ahead. The master plan amendment for the Minnesota River Bluffs Regional Trail works to address the strategy to repair the slope failure and then long-term, it will address the long-term stewardship and ownership of the corridor in Carver County. With that, Mr. Chair, I'd open it up for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Walsh at this time?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I know Mr. Walsh doesn't have any dates on there, up there. And on behalf of-
My question, Commissioner Workman.
On behalf of the government, I'd like to apologize for the government, this lovely piece of trail that many have missed for now four years, tied up in all the red tape of all, we don't even own it. So I know Marty knows I'm not blaming him for this, but next year it'll be completed? Marty?
You know, Mr. Chair, I'd love to, and Commissioner Workman, I'd love to give you a date. We've got processes to move through. We, I think honestly, it's difficult this year for it to be underway. I don't know with regards to some other things, that we'll do some soil investigation work and what we discover in that realm of things could lead us to some other direction here. So it's a railroad corridor. We know that railroad corridors leak things, you know, trains leak things. We don't anticipate problems, but I don't have all the information to give you solid assurances.
Exactly right. So I would like to have the timeline myself and Marty and Commissioners, but there's a lot of balls in the air on this one. So it's a tough thing to do. We appreciate what you're doing, Marty, to make it happen. And I understand the direction from the board has been to proceed carefully and I guess because of all the pitfalls and liabilities that could occur in this thing, you're doing the right thing. But if we're watching blue bloods on TV, I would say forthwith.
Right.
And that's, yeah. So, okay, all right, so no other questions or comments?
I'd move approval if we need that, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, we do. So Commissioner Workman moves and Commissioner Lynch on the second. Is there any further discussion regarding this action item? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That motion prevails. Thank you, Mr. Walsh, very much.
Thank you, rest of your chair members.
All right, moving on to item number seven, which, or seven point one, which is Riley Purgatory Bluff Creek Watershed District Board of Managers' Appointment. So is there a staff, yeah, staff person on that?
No, typically the chair takes that, but pretty straightforward in terms of the two applicants that have applied.
Yeah, this area regards an area in the district of Commissioner Degler and Commissioner Workman and then so I'll turn it over to Commissioner Workman to make a recommendation or nomination.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I do see one of the applicants in the room and he happens to be the one that I would like to nominate, if that's the word for this position. He's a bright gentleman and, and we're finally going to get maybe Riley Purgatory Bluff Creek Commissioner on, from Lotus Lake of all places, one of the hotbeds up there. And, but maybe Mr. Cook can come on up and say a word or three and-
That would be great, Commissioner Workman. So Mr. Cook, could you come up and please address the board direct, or board of commissioners?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name's Larry Cook. I live at four seventy-one Big Horn Drive in Chanhasan. I've lived there with my wife and my son for twenty-eight years on that basis. I have been very involved with the watershed since two thousand and fourteen. I believe in the importance of our water resources, be they lakes, streams, creeks, wetlands, et cetera, because they're all interrelated. But what I really believe in is good and efficient and responsible government and I think it's very, very important that especially in appointed positions that we have people who are concerned. I have particularly involved myself in helping with the tenure plan, which was recently approved. I've also worked in the process of coming up with the rules that the, that the managers, you know, recently adopted a few years ago. My philosophy is to find that right balance, okay, between government and needs and I think it's very important to be able to take that, that position to step back. But I think the number one thing I want to do if I'm appointed is to improve the communication between the counties, the cities, et cetera, which through no fault of anybody else, and I blame anybody, I think it could be improved. And I, for one, would like to be able to be here on a regular basis, at least annually, and field questions and tell you, you know, what, what we're doing. So should I be, should you feel that I can be appointed? I would take it very seriously. So if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Cook? Well, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you very much. And I know this is a little out of order, but I use the trails a lot and I really appreciate the fact, you know, that you've developed the trails. I'm not a cyclist, I'm a biker. I bike all the trails and I actually go out to New Germany, you know, several times around. I'd love to have the connection through Waconia because there's nothing more boring than going out and coming back the same way. So I just want to thank you for all the efforts you do that. I thank you.
Thank you for that, Mr. Cook. Commissioner Workman, do you have a motion?
I would move the appointment of the Riley Purgatory Bluff Creek Watershed District Board of Managers, the name of Mr. Larry Cook.
All right, is there a second?
I would second.
Okay, Commissioner Workman on the motion, Commissioner Lynch on the second. Discussion, I'd just like to say, this position, we've had some very good managers over there and I think, as you noted, it's nice to have one from Lotus Lake and I think that's, that's a good thing. It's about time. I agree with you, Commissioner Workman. So is there any further discussion on that nomination? Hearing none, all in favor of that nomination? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? All right, that, Mr. Cook, congratulations. You're a member of that board. And that communication between the, your managers and the cities and the counties, good luck. Let me know how that works for you, okay?
I'll do my best, that's all I can do.
And I say that optimistically, not saying, okay. Okay, Mr. Hemsey spends a lot of time on that.
For sure, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
All right, let's see.
Mr. Chair, if I could, I would like to make the motion to adjourn our regular session and go into work session.
Second.
Thank you. And Commissioner Lynch on the motion, Commissioner Workman on the second, and that's not debatable. I'll let folks know, though, that we're going into a work session and discussing under growth management and the challenges and opportunities resulting from growth and development. And we're going to be talking about a sheriff's cadet. So with that, there's a motion, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? All right, we stand adjourned, moving on to the work session.